Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the May 5, 2022 Smyrna Municipal Planning Commission Meeting. I will now call this meeting to order. Will be led tonight in prayer by Mike and Amy with our pledge. You'd stand with us, please. Let us pray.
Dear Father, Lord, we just thank you for this day. Father God, we just thank you for the opportunity we have to serve our community and serve our town. Father God, just continue to lead, guide, and direct us in all we do. Father, just watch over this committee tonight as we make decisions for the town. Father God, just thank you for the rain that we are receiving out there today. Father God, just continue to lead, guide, and direct us in our daily lives, keep us on your path. Father, we just love you and thank you in Christ's name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mike and Amy. Kevin, citizens' comments?
None at this time.
Okay, our next agenda item is approval of the minutes of the April 27, or excuse me, April 7, 2022 meeting. Counselor of the minutes in order?
The order is to form, Jim.
Does anyone from the commission have a question or a comment concerning last month's meeting? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
I have a motion to approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you all. I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the April 7, 2022 meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. Kevin, the next item is election of officers?
That is correct.
You know, I'm wondering, Counselor, you may be able to help me. We're not quite at a full staff or commission up here. Is it advisable to go ahead and move forward, or should we wait? Or do we have to move forward, I guess would be the question?
I think it's in this board's prerogative. I think it would be fine if you wanted to wait one more month if you want, or you can go forward. I would feel comfortable with either.
Comfortable with either?
Yes.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the commission? We can either go ahead and accept nominations for our officers, which would be chairman and vice chairman, or we can wait until we're hopefully at full capacity next month.
I think we should defer.
You want to...
Would we need to make a motion to defer?
Since it's an action item, let's go ahead and make a motion.
Okay.
Motion to defer.
I have a motion to defer the election of officers. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to defer the election of officers. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion to defer is approved. We are now on to old business. Our first item is site plans, second wave, Motlow College Boulevard, Sam Ridley Parkway West, Genie Lane. Owner/Developer, Second Wave Development.
At second wave, Sam Ridley is proposing for 462 units, which is consisting of 350 multifamily units and 112 single-family units located on Sam Ridley Parkway at the corner of Motlow College Boulevard and Genie Lane. Property was rezoned from R6 to PRD during the November 2021 council meeting. Property is proposed to be built in one phase and would have access points off of Jackdaw Drive, Genie Lane, and Motlow College Boulevard. Total for the site, vehicular use area, we're looking at 9.4 acres, which would require .94 acres of landscaping. They are showing for .94 acres as well. Total parking, 924 spaces are required at two per unit, and they are showing for 1,022 spaces. Handicap park required is eight spaces, and they are showing for 38. Landscape plan shows street trees and shrubs lying Genie Lane with additional trees shown along Motlow College Boulevard and Sam Ridley Parkway. Shrubbery is shown around the perimeter of the drive aisles at entrances to the site and throughout the site as well. Landscape islands are shown throughout the parking lots with a mix of shrubbery and trees. Arch touch elevations show the apartments, duplexes, and single-family units to be built using entirely fiber-sment board of varying colors and accents. Couple standard comments, all to remain. We also have a couple staff comments to go through. Couple, first four comments were all informational regarding the buildings to be sprinkled. The structures that are three or more stories in height will be required to be reviewed by the State Fire Marshal's Office prior to issuance of a permit. Utility plans are under review at this time, and a subdivision plat and construction plans for the extension of Jackdaw Drive will be required as we require them to show the dedication of all the public easements as well for that area. Comment five, to provide a pedestrian cross-access easement for the construction of the sidewalk on the YMCA property. Applicant has noted they are currently working with the YMCA at this time to come to a resolution for that. Comment six, we ask them to show approval from Rutherford County ECD for the road names for the internal private streets, and the town does not review and approve road names. Seven, the staff would recommend phasing plan. Applicant has noted that this time they do intend on doing this phase all in one. Number eight was regarding the clubhouse location. They were showing it previously at 6.1 feet away from the extension of Jackdaw Drive. They have shifted it to about a little over two feet away, so now it's being shown at 8.2 feet instead of 6.1 feet. With that, staff does feel comfortable enough to remove that comment. Comment nine, we ask them to show details on the recreational amenities, and then number 10 went along with that amenity comment as well. At this time, based on the proposal they have submitted to us for the most recent submit all, staff feels comfortable with those submittals to take those comments off. Comments 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15 are all codes for our department and utilities. We ask them to show details on the retaining walls on the site. Each apartment building needs to have its own valve for domestic water and fire protection. We ask them to show all the FDC locations, and the FDCs cannot be on the buildings, must be minimum of 30 foot off the buildings. Irrigation will need to come off the eight-inch line on Genie Lane and 18-inch on Motlow College Boulevard, and put a master meter for domestic water on Jackdaw Drive. So all said, comments eight, nine, 10 can be removed, and with that, staff would recommend approval based on the most recent submit all package. We now feel comfortable enough to recommend approval with staff comments.
Okay, questions for Mitchell?
Mitchell on the clubhouse, where it was six, six feet, 46 feet, and they went to 8.2. What is required? What's our requirement for that?
Well, since this was a PRD, this kind of is set by the PRD plan. The original plan, the clubhouse didn't go quite as far north, and so that's where this is located. And the other thing that kind of led to our change and our concern on that, any doorways that lead to that sidewalk and toward that road are actually well over 20 feet away. That area, there's no door or anything coming out of there, so we didn't feel like, you know, no one's going to walk out of there and be in the road. And so it's going to be well over 20 feet. And so that changed, well, our recommendation changed once we saw the additional information.
Is it staff's opinion now? I just want to make sure I'm clear that with the updates from the developer, that the outstanding items that staff would be or were concerned with have been addressed, and the remaining items on this are more of a routine or informational type?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Are they, are they going to do it in phases? Or they still want to try to do it all at one?
They want to do it in one phase, which that's, that's, that's kind of what they've said all along, they wanted to do it in one phase. We looked at it. We felt like it was to their advantage to not do it in one phase, just because it's going to require basically all of the utilities for the entire site. You're going to have to be basically completely ready to go for the entire site before they can get the first building permit. And so we felt like it made sense to us for them to phase it, because they can start construction of buildings while they're finishing the rest of it or whatever.
Right.
But that's their prerogative, and so if that's how they want to do it, that's, that's fine. But we've recommended that. It made sense to us that they break it up into phases.
Because that, what that will do is extend their time. They could start maybe another two or three months for all that's, all of it's put in instead of doing it in steps.
Correct, correct. Yeah. But that's really, again, that's their prerogative. If they wanted to do it all that way, that's fine. They just, there's, there's a long, there's a lot of infrastructure construction to do.
Right.
There's a lot of utilities to put in the ground, a lot of grading to be done before they can ever start building. If they did it in phases, they might could realize some permits and construction earlier, but that's, again, that's their, their decision, so.
But it, being their decision, there's nothing detrimental to the town of Smyrna?
Correct.
Should they choose to do that?
Correct.
Are you, are you...
I'm in the second wave, yes, sir.
Come on up and give us your name and address, and if you want to address that portion of it, please, Phil.
Yes, sir. Stan Jones, Second Wave. I live in Franklin, Tennessee. So in the civil design, it is our intent to try to get all the infrastructure in, in one swoop. The site is designed with a split on the, all the utilities, water and sewer, where the single-family residences are tapping off a separate tap than what the multifamily units are tapping. So they're two independent units. If we could break that into two master permits, that would probably be preferred. After conversation with you guys, I think that's probably the wisest choice, but we do understand we'll have the water and sewer in before we're doing anything on building permits. Yes, sir.
All right. Mike, you good?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Why, we have Mr. Jones up here. Thank you.
Kevin, what was the concern with the, it's a pedestrian cross-access? Looks like they've got a sidewalk on the property there tying into YMCA.
That's correct. And not only concern there is just that they, there needs to be some sort of easement granted for that cross-access between the two properties. It doesn't exist today.
Because, yeah, because if the lines are here right, it looks like the, they're pretty close to their property line itself.
So, yeah, that's, that's all we'd ask for is just, and they're, and they're working through that. I think it's not there today. If for some reason they can't work that out, that sidewalk goes away in there, so. But that's just, as an, obviously for their residents, they're looking at that as an amenity to be able to provide some pedestrian, that you could walk to the Y and work out in the morning before you go to work kind of thing, so. So, I mean, that's, and we don't have a concern with it, just we just want to be sure that there's an easement for it, it's built.
Right. So the sidewalk on the front of the property will come from Motlow, I guess, the whole property there, right?
There'll be sidewalks along Genie Lane and along Motlow, and all internal to the site, quite a few of them all over it, so, yeah.
And there's not anything on the other side of the road right now, on Genie?
On the other side of Genie, nothing's been submitted to us for review.
Okay. If it develops, will, there'll need, there'll need to be another sidewalk on that side of the road at some point, we'll have to have a pedestrian crossing right?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
I've got a question. Does the, will the motion include the breaking up of the permits, or is that not part of it?
I think that's something we could probably deal with administratively when they submit their water and sewer construction plans to, to go, end up going to the state of Tennessee for review before they can get permits. I think we can work with them on that.
Okay.
At staff level.
Okay.
With that said, I'd like to make a motion to approve with staff comment?
I have a motion to approve with staff comments for Andrew. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. Our next agenda item under site plans is Lot 4, Phase 1, Lee Bowman Subdivision, corner of Potomac Place and Cheney Road. Owner/Developer, John Lee LLC.
Yeah, this is a plan that y'all looked at last month. We asked, we had a couple concerns about the access point along the private drive. Applicant has worked with staff to revise the plans to kind of come to a conclusion as far as how we can all work together and feel this product works the best on this piece of property. So the building size is 14,273 square foot of retail space with 5,044 square feet of warehouse space for a total building size of 19,317 square feet. As proposed, the site would have three access points, one off of Cheney, one off Potomac, and the private drive which leads throughout the site. The applicant is proposing to subdivide this property into three separate tracks in the near future as well. Vehicle use area for the site, 38,816 square feet, which would require 3,682 square feet of landscaping. Applicant's proposing for 4,500 square feet. Parking required of 59 spaces, and they are showing for 70. Handicap parking space required of three, and they are showing for three spaces as well. Landscape plan shows trees and shrubbery at the entrances off Cheney Road along the private access drive and around the base of the building. Shrubbery is shown within landscape islands throughout the parking lot. As proposed, landscape plan does not meet designer review in terms of streetscaping along the length of the public right-of-ways. Being this is all one parcel currently, streetscaping requirement requires you to put streetscaping along all the road frontages. We have talked with the applicant about this, and then there is a plan in the near future for them to subdivide this property out, and at that time, this property would then be in compliance as designed with the current landscaping proposal. Architecture elevations submitted show the buildings to be built primarily on materials of brick and glass and glazing. Accent materials used include varying colors of steel and limestone. All four elevation contain at least 90% primer materials and do meet the designer review manual as presented. Couple standard comments, all to remain, we have a couple staff comments to go through. Staff found one, two, and three are more or less informational. The building location is required to be staked prior to a footing inspection due to the close proximity to the Enbridge easement. The building is required to be sprinkled, and the, we asked the applicant to contact Enbridge about landscaping and the easement. There has been some issues raised recently on other sites nearby this one. Across the, across the street from that private access drive, there was an oil change facility that I believe ran some issues with Enbridge regarding the landscaping proposed and the easement, so that is essentially up to Enbridge as far as what can and cannot be placed inside the easement. The applicant has at this time contacted Enbridge, has not heard back from them yet, so we'll kind of work with them on that as far as whatever Enbridge decides. Comment four, we asked them to show the total building square footage. There was a second story in that building, and they have addressed that comment, it is now shown correctly on the plans, so we can remove that comment. Comment five, we asked them to show an additional ADA parking space due to the number proposed, what additional was required, and they have shown, so now three are shown and has, can meet ADA requirements, so that can be removed. Comment six, we asked them to provide an ADA accessible route from the sidewalk on Cheney Road or Potomac Place to the front of the building. They have done so, however, staff would feel better if they extend that sidewalk, but they're showing it along the private access drive off Cheney. We'd prefer them bring it behind the dumpster location up to the existing sidewalk that ties along the south side of the building. That way, we wouldn't have any of the accessible routes crossing any vehicular traffic aisles, drive aisles. So it's a pretty minor comment, but we just asked them to revise the ADA accessible route. And with that, staff would recommend approval with, with the remaining staff comments.
Mitchell, is that comments one, two, three, and six then?
Correct. Revised six, yes.
Okay.
With the change in just the parking for the truck and delivering equipment, material supplies, are we, is the space that's increased or that's been changed, is that satisfactory?
Yeah.
Or maybe just a box-sized truck or a truck larger than that?
I believe what they're showing is box trucks there, but they do have an additional access, kind of a pull-off, more or less, off of that private access drive, which is more than what was previously shown. They previously had them basically backing in off the road, so now they have an actual space where vehicles can at least get off the road and come maneuver into position. So based on that, we do feel comfortable with the way it's designed.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve with staff comment?
I have a motion to approve with staff comments from Andrew. Do I have a second? Second one. Oh, got a question, I'm sorry. Shall we make it with adding that sidewalk, Andrew?
Oh, yeah. That's, that, that is already on there, right? It says place to the front of the building?
Yeah, that is. Yeah, we reported at comment six.
Yeah, it's at the end of six.
Okay, so that's satisfactory then? Okay. So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, pretend. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please mark me as not voting. Our next items are under new business. First will be annexation, rezoning, and plan of service request. Edward Clark, 14001, Old Nashville Highway, rezoning R1 to C2.
Yeah, this is attractive land. It is on Old Nashville Highway, 14,001 Old Nashville Highway. It is just southeast of the intersection there with Rock Springs Road. Currently zoned R1, have been requested to be rezoned to C2. It's about one acre of property. Surrounding zoning is a mix of C2, C4, and R1. Land use plan for this area is for the Sam Ridley Corridor, even though it is not quite on Sam Ridley. The corridor itself, we actually did include it all, kind of, this parcel is actually the last track, it's in that character area, which would support a mix of kind of retail and service uses. So certainly C2 would be consistent with that. Major thoroughfare plan does show Old Nashville Highway as a minor arterial, and there is adequate right-of-way there for, for this street as it exists, as a five-lane road currently at that location. That is all that I've got.
Kevin, this appears to be fairly consistent with the surrounding zoning. Is that correct?
Yes, it's C2 on one side and across the street, and then it's C4 to the rear of it, along Rock Springs Road. There's a large tract of land south of it there that is still R1, still in agricultural use. So it still has that R1 zoning. I would anticipate at some point, there's no plans that I'm aware of, but at some point, if it ever develops, I doubt it would develop an R1 type zoning, so could certainly seek more commercial on, on Old Nashville as you go down the road there, so, before you get to the residential, the more developed residential areas a little further south, but...
I think we've seen this before, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. I, I think it was brought in, and there was a proposed usage as a, maybe an auto-type either service or dealership or something like that. With the C2 zoning, that would be prohibited, correct?
Yeah, that zone does not allow any type of automotive sales or repair uses any longer, so that would not be the case.
There's a current home there, so they could use a professional office or something like that.
It could be, or if they wanted to do that, or for hope that the home could be torn down and a new building built, I mean.
And with that, there'd be, once we looked at this under a site, we'd make sure that we have proper buffers in place for...
Sure.
At least until there could be some potential future commercial development. As, as I'm looking at this, it's kind of, it seems to really dovetail with a comprehensive plan with going from commercial maybe to neighborhood commercial and into a little, potentially some more density if there's anything left, down to the single family. So, and as I stated, it's, this does appear consistent with what is at this intersection and just off of Sam Ridley here. Other questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve with staff comment.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. Kevin, the next agenda item, has that been withdrawn?
That has been withdrawn from the agenda, yes.
Okay. And then, agenda item three has been requested to be deferred?
They did request that you all, yes, they did not withdraw, they did request that you defer action till next month, so we would need to get in a, just a motion to defer on that.
Yeah, we need to entertain a motion to defer. Is staff okay with a deferral on this?
We are, yes.
Okay. Any questions for Kevin or staff on this one?
Motion to defer.
I have a motion to defer. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to defer. Any further comment or questions? All those in favor of deferring this agenda item signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion has been deferred. Let's see, we are now on to preliminary plats. Our first item is Sims Ridge, Section 1, Tamlin Avenue. Owner/Developer, Old Self Properties Incorporated.
Yeah, this is Section 1. This is the development that y'all looked at a few months ago for, for zoning purposes. This is, was rezoned to PRD. This is the first phase of that. It's 38 lots on 15.53 acres. It would extend Tamlin Avenue, would also extend two new streets southward from there. It is consistent with our, the approved PRD for this property. We had several comments, several of them were standard comments, so comments one through six would all need to remain just as standard comments. Comment number seven, we asked them to submit the road names, 911 approval for those names. We do, they do have road names shown now. I don't know if we've, I don't think we received the 911 approval, so we want to keep that piece until I can confirm that. Number eight would need to remain regarding the roadway lighting plan. Comment nine has been taken care of, so it can be removed. Comment 10 regarding the access easement has been approved, or done, so it can be removed. Comment 11, we'd ask some, Tamlin Avenue, they are showing the right-of-way extending to that eastern property line, but they're stopping the construction before they get to that. And they have basically asked to not be required to do that at this time, just because there's no, to get on, to actually make that construction happen and make the slope, meet the slope requirements of our subdivision regulations as far as the maximum slope and all that, they would have to actually get on the adjoining property to make the grade work, so they have requested... So they have requested just to have it approved as it is shown. Comment 12 can be removed regarding the critical lots, they addressed that. Comment number 13, showing label all the utility and trans easements and those, some distances, those have all been done, so we can remove that one. And then comment 14 regarding the pavement widths, they are shown now, so we can remove that as well. So basically comments one through six need to remain, comment seven as amended eight and then need to remain, and then just any discussion you all want to have regarding comment 11. I understand why they don't want to do it, but we typically have required that in other situations, so. Couple of times that has come up, so. We would recommend it, obviously, we don't want to have a piece of right of way where the road doesn't get built, so that doesn't, then it's left to the next guy on the property to the east to do that, so.
Yeah, I'd like a little more discussion on that, Kevin, if you would. So when, could you point out to us what we're talking about here, so I want to make sure everybody's clear on this?
Yeah, it's the area, see if, I don't know if you can see my mouse up there or not, right there, it's this area right here, where it comes west to east is where the road runs, and it's on that eastern end of it. It's roughly, I don't know, 70, 50 to 75 feet, I think, roughly short of the property lines, just where they're at, looking to stop, want to stop construction. It would provide access to all the lots that they're building, that sort of thing, but it would, it would require, if the next property to the east develops, it would require them to basically build the road at that time, so. Or the city ends up having to do it, or something like that, which we don't want to do either, so. Of course, if the property to these never develops, it won't be an issue, but once it ha, I mean, every piece of ground around seems to be looked at these days, so I don't know that it'll, if it'll ever develop or not, but it's, it's some steep topo on that east, that property to the east, so, but this property has some steep topo too, and it's developing, so.
To make sure I understand, so your cursor was pointing at the space that says open space B.
That's correct.
And if I'm understanding you correctly, it's actually going past that a little bit?
It is going pa, it's going, well, there's lot eight, I believe it's eight and nine.
Mm-hmm.
It's kind of between that area there, that's a, it's kind of near the eastern boundary of lot eight is where they're looking to stop construction. There's actually an arrow pointing to a spot that says end road construction.
Oh, now see, okay.
Yeah.
We've consistently taken these to the property line.
Yeah, anytime it was come up in the past, we've always required it to be done. Sometimes that means they have to get some sort of construction easement on the adjoining tract of land to, to make that construction happen, to make, again, to get the, the grade correct and that sort of thing.
So if they don't extend that road, it won't affect lot eight per se, but it will nine? Because it'll stop short on nine?
Well, it'll be, they'll still have road, they'll have, there's enough road fronters there, they could still get a driveway in and that sort of thing.
I mean, driveway, I'm saying the road will stop and part of lot nine will be with no road in front of it.
Yes, that is, that is correct.
Lot eight, that open, that open space on eight kind of gives them that area.
Right, that is correct, I mean, again, it wouldn't affect them to the point they couldn't build a house on it.
Sure.
But, but yes, you're correct.
Yeah, you put your, situate the house where you could come back in towards lot 10.
And the problem, it's funny, the problem is the grading.
Yeah, because of the steepness, I mean, there's a maximum slope of 10% for a residential street as far as the max, which is pretty steep, but it's, that is the maximum slope that our regs and our codes allow, so. Anyway, and so to make that work because of the grading, they basically, if they go to the property line, it's basically going to be too steep. And so they have, but if they can get onto that adjoining property and do some grading on that property to level that off, they can make the grade work, so.
Trying to figure out exactly what's, that's going to look like.
If it's not done now, and this property beside of it, that's, looks like open space, develops, who's responsible for finishing that road?
Well, if it doesn't get built, and it's public right, and say, say this property develops out, all houses get built, bonds are completed, we release the bonds, everything's done, and five years from now, the property to the east develops, it's either going to be, it's, we could ask the developer, but I mean, it's going to be up to him either to do it, or they're going to look and say, well, the city, you accepted the right of way without it built, they could look to us to, I mean, at that point, we have to work through that, I guess, but.
Knowing that going in, it's. I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to push that off on the city and/or another developer to have to finish that, and then you get into, wouldn't be a good situation.
Yeah, we're going to recognize you, name and your address, please.
Nathan Melson, I'm with Civil Infrastructure Associates, 307 Hickerson Drive, Merk's Row, Tennessee. We're the civil engineer on the project, and just wanted to, of course, discuss this and alleviate any concerns. So as y'all may have remembered, you know, this, the concept plan came through, this is, this layout is following that concept plan as part of the PRD, and the roadway that's shown to connect on the east side that we're discussing here was laid out such that it would connect in with that adjacent development they have, I think a concept plan or have provided maybe a master plan for that development, I believe. And so we're trying to connect in with that, but as we are going through the construction plans and getting in the grading design, in order, in order for us to build the road all the way to the eastern property line, we would have to get a construction easement in order to match the city's street specifications for road slope. But, and so, I mean, we can certainly do that, or we can look at a alternative design that maybe better benefit the, the adjacent property owner and also accommodate the slopes here. I've talked, I've spoken with Kevin about this, there's a different option, like we could extend, if you look at the south side, Glide Circle, that could be extended out if that is okay with the city, and then you can turn Tamlin Avenue into just cul-de-sac it there at the intersection, on the eastern side of the intersection of Tamlin Avenue and Guardian, Guardian Drive, and so we could, we could do that. So we could still have the connection to the eastern property line as part of this, but still, of course, make, make all the grades work. And so, but we still have to go through construction plan review, of course, get Charles King involved, and of course, get planning, make sure that they're okay with the actual rearrangement of the lots, but that is other options that we've looked at. But with this one we brought forward is intended to make sure that we are following the PRD plan. And that's why we brought it in this form.
The open space that's in the top of that beside lot eight?
Mm-hmm.
Where the road, you all are wanting to stop the road currently, does it, does it go up to that line at lot eight?
I'm not sure, Kevin said it's, what, 7500 feet?
I think it's a little shy of the eastern property line of lot eight.
So the road would stop again on lot eight, shy of, shy of encompassing the whole lot?
Same with, same as lot nine, yeah.
Okay. So the only, one option would be is to not develop eight and nine, and they could stop the road short anyway, just leave that green space.
Well, I mean, the, of course, the approved PRD has the road going through, it's just as he was stating, I mean, this, this was, you know, Tamlin, what, they, they were tying in, there is a master plan, that was Hidden Hills development, that property, there's a master plan for Tamlin Avenue would connect. There's an existing Tamlin Avenue in Hidden Hills, and it would connect through, all the way through, connect the neighborhoods all together. And so that is why they, that's exactly why they put it there, that's why it was planned for it, you know.
It wouldn't make sense to cul-de-sac it then.
I mean, if, if it's cul-de-sac, then it can't be, it needs to change the name, which that's not a big deal, but.
I'm just worried about losing the connectivity of that work to happen.
That was, yeah, I agree. And it may fit, like, maybe there's another option, when that, when that ma, the master plan for Hidden Hills was done, that was the one that kind of made the most sense at the time, just because again, we had the stubb street coming off of Spring Hill Drive there, you know, to make that connection from Spring Hill Drive all the way through to, to St. Francis and everything in Hidden Hills, Bonaphe and all those. But, you know, so having an alternative connection might, would work, but again, this is what is consistent with the PRD, and there's, I mean, if you do cul-de-sac Tamlin, I do think we need to have something, there needs to be another connection to that east somewhere.
And that, and that was why my offer was a good, good location here, that doesn't have nearly the terrain that you have to accommodate, is Glide Circle down there at the south, so you're at the south side of this section, so it's not going into a next, another section further south, but it's here in this section, and we could show just a stubb street on the east side of Guardian Drive, so very, basically extending Glide Circle. But there's not, I don't, Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think there has been a preliminary plat or anything for this section of Hidden Hills.
No. I mean, there's talk about different things on that property, so we, this may all become a moot point, some of the conversations we've had, I've had with the owners of that property, but as of right now, this is, you know, this is what we have.
The open space that's there, is that up on top of that hill with a lot of rock and just not good terrain to build on?
Yeah, I mean, that's, there's, there's some, if you look in some of them beyond the initial sheets that I've got on the screen there, there's some, there's some steep topography, I mean, there's no doubt about that, on some of these, some of this area.
So it's possible that won't, that may not ever get developed?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, on, on that property with the Hidden Hills that we're talking about, again, we haven't seen anything, we've had talk, we've had discussions about that property, and it may be that, that it doesn't develop the way that it was master planned originally, in which case cul-de-sacking this wouldn't, wouldn't be a big deal, so. That's not been submitted to us yet, we haven't seen that, we just had discussions with the I do think we, I could say, I think we got to have, we need to have something to the east, it's somewhere, if it's not Tamlin, just because we want to have some connectivity.
May I ask, where are you proposing the road to connect to the east?
So if you look at the next intersection down on the bottom of the sheet, at the Glide Circle, it's basically a stubb street now with that cul-de-sac or eyebrow on the, on the bottom of your sheet there, that, we would just extend that circle, we would shift the lots and allow for Glide Circle for right of way to go to the eastern property line. Their terrain isn't, isn't near steep there, and so it's, it's more accommodating.
Would that be where's lot 73, 74 is at?
Right.
Yes, sir.
Okay. It would just stub out into that future access?
So you wouldn't have a 73 and 74?
Uh, no, man, we would, we would shift, we would shift lots around to accommodate that, and there may be some accommodations, like for instance, Tam, the, if Tamlin Avenue is unable to, if just due to terrain is unable to make that connection, we would adjust the lots, cul-de-sac that corner, which that way you have larger cul-de-sac lots in that corner, so that way they could accommodate the terrain, you could still have good home sites on it, but you're not going to have just some drop offs there at the, at your lot lines, which is what we want to avoid.
So I'm gathering that we're not, probably not going to solve this here tonight.
I mean, it'll be, it'll be solved before construction plans get approved, sure.
But there's a lot of ifs and maybes in, in this moment, I'm trying to figure out what are we voting on?
Well, I, I think maybe to your point, Tim, comment maybe 11 needs to be maybe amended to an and/or creating an addition, creating an alternative easement at Glide Circle. Kevin, with that?
I think, yeah, extend it to the property line or create an alternative connection at another location, that Glide Circle is the most logical one, and, and we can work through with the developer, the engineer, and our engineering folks, we can kind of make some, and then also potentially just look at what we may end up getting submitted to us on that property to the east and kind of work through kind of what works best for everybody.
Yeah, and I think Mike made a, a great point as far as the topo right around eight or nine, and trying to figure out, does something actually develop on the other side of that or not because of the same reason?
Right. Yeah, I think that would, reword of 11, like what you're talking about, either or, and then approve it, and then we get the construction plans, we work through everything, and then when the final plaque, you see the final flat, it'll be in its final form. It might be a little different from what you see on preliminary, if something changes with the cul-de-sac or whatever, but the basic layout would still be the same with what you're looking at.
It'll, it'll change some, especially with 73 and 74, I understand they don't want those two lots for a road, but they can probably move some.
They'll end up somewhere else.
Right, that's correct.
Yeah.
So maybe you lose one lot, but you're not going through the trouble of extending Tamlin.
And maybe in the long run, it makes a better sense for connection anyway.
Well, that topography up there is not good. Plus, on the next parcel, if it does develop, let's say they don't develop that back, they just develop that front, or the south side of it, then that should be low enough with the topography for it to work better for the people next, the property owners next door. Okay.
And will that also provide us a more finished curb appeal for seven, eight and nine?
Yes, yes, if we, if we perhaps short, either shorten Tamlin, or basically you turn that intersection, just one half of it into a cul-de-sac, kind of similar to what you see down there on the bottom of your sheet, where you have just a kind of a half cul-de-sac, then you have several lots, there'd be large lots that extend out to the rear property line, but you still have that connection, which, you know, I'm, I'm all for, there's a lot of stubb streets in this area, and so I know that's a big priority for the city.
Okay, any other further questions or discussion? I will entertain a motion.
I don't think any of us know what to do.
I'm going to try.
All right, go ahead. You got Kevin there and Jeff as a backup if you get there, Tim.
See if we can go through this first try.
All right. So, motion to approve with staff comments with a, an exception or a change of number 11 to include verbiage saying either or, an alternative easement at Glide Circle. Okay, I think you got it.
I think that's good.
Jeff, you good?
I'm good with that.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. Our next item is Sundale subdivision, section three, Bountiful Drive in Generosity Way, owner developer Scott Butler.
Yeah, this is, it says Sundale, section three, it's, and part of the Sundale PRD is 43 lots, 8.65 acres. This is one we had, had seen before, and it's, their approval had expired, so they resubmit it. We had several comments, one through five were kind of standard comments, we want to keep. keep all five of those. And then comment six regarding the roadway lighting plan, we still need to get that. Comment seven, they're contours, they had them on here, but they didn't have them labeled, so that's been taken care of, so we can remove comment seven. And then comment eight regarding the fire hydrants, and that all lots be within 500 feet of a hydrant, they have added those hydrants and they're all within 500, all the lots are within 500 feet, so we can remove comment eight. So we would recommend approval basically with comments one through six.
Questions for Kevin or staff? I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? This motion is approved. Our next item is Woodmont Phase 8A, Blue Diamond Drive, owner, developer, Meritage Homes of Tennessee Incorporated.
Yeah, this is the Phase 8A Woodmont, it's part of the Woodmont PRD, it's 52 lots, 22.91 acres. This is, a plat that's come through here a couple of different times, and so this is, again, it's, keeps expiring, the approval keeps expiring, so they have resubmitted. We had a few comments, several of them are kind of our standard comments, one through, one through, really one through six regarding the development agreement and construction plans and those kind of things. The, we did ask them to comment number seven regarding, show and label all the easements, and we would, well, that one has been taken care of, so we can remove, remove that comment. This does, Blue Diamond Drive is kind of a, is a collector's street, and I didn't make note of that, would eventually connect all the way to Green Tree Drive, and so, and again, they are showing, that is shown as a 60-foot right-of-way, so I did want to point that out. This is consistent with our thoroughfare plan in that regard. Also, connect, it's part of Phase 8B, would connect over to Winslet Drive as well, and also into Summer Ridge and Griffith Place, but that's, that's the next one, so. And again, we would recommend approval with those remaining comments, one through six.
And we've not seen any change, this is consistent with what's been previously submitted?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Road layout, all that is the same.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments, further discussion? All those in favor then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. We are now on to Woodmont Phase 8B, Winslet Drive, owner, developer, Meritage Homes of Tennessee.
Yeah, this is again, just to state, it's part of Phase, Woodmont Phase 8, this is 8B, it's 24 lots, 15.15 acres. Again, we had kind of several standard comments, we want to keep all those kind of one through six there. Similar comment on this one is the last one, it's running the show and label all the easements, specifically there was a storm drain on Lot 867 that didn't have an easement shown, that's all been taken care of and addressed. And then, so we can remove that comment seven, and then comment eight regarding, there were some existing, there's an existing water main with a need, that needs an easement shown, and they show that easement for that existing, as well as they're going to actually remove part of that and move it to a different location, so to show those easements and that has been addressed too, so comment eight has been addressed, so we would just keep those comments one through six on this, and with that, staff would recommend approval.
Okay, questions for Kevin?
Mr. Chairman, I will, we had, I spoke with you about this earlier today, we did have a, a neighboring property owner did request to be able to address the planning commission regarding this one.
Okay, is he here?
Yes.
Okay, I will allow it. If you come up, please, give us your name and address.
I have provided a handout to Kevin to pass around, and I think it'll be helpful to show some of my concerns. The, my name is Gary Fisher, my wife and I resided in this property for over 30 years, so we've seen a lot of development. But if you look at page two of the handout, you can see where our property is marked on there, and around that you can see a little white dotted line that says, the, that's the entire drainage area that kind of circles and surround our property. This section 8B is going to be located east of it, and you can see we got Woodmont Phase 8B with an arrow pointed up there. So every one of those lots, as well as the Winslet Drive extension, will have a drainage effect on our property. So the, there's really nowhere for this drainage to go, because there is no existing drainage on our property that will accept their runoff, nor is there any existing drainage that goes around our property that can take the runoff. So, so we don't want to be the floodplain for the, for this section. We do have an engineer that as soon as we do have the, the final request, that we'll be looking at the drainage calculations, and he has requested that at that, at the appropriate time, he gets the drainage calculations so that he can, in fact, look at it. But I just don't see any way that you can build a road in all those houses just east of us with the entire water coming down on us, whether they put it in a retention pond for a while, or they, they pump it out in a concentrated form somewhere, there is going to be a drainage problem. So we're asking as a part of what's required when they do submit a further request, that they submit the drainage calculations.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Kevin, can you talk to us a little bit about when we look at something as far as drainage and what our ordinances require and a little bit of the process, and then address Mr. Fisher's request as far as obtaining drainage calculations?
Sure. Yeah, the, the, once the preliminary plat is approved, you know, there's, before they can submit their final plat, they do have to submit the construction documents, which is water and sewer and stormwater and street construction, all of that. And so, and certainly anything that we get submitted, it becomes public record and Mr. Fisher just has to submit the open records request, and we could give it to him. As part of that, the stormwater drainage calculations are a part of that certainly, and we could provide that as well, once we have received them. The process, I mean, that is, they are required to, to provide detention on their property, they, through ponds or typically through some sort of detention pond on a residential development, it's usually not an underground basin or anything on that, the subdivision, so. But they'll have to provide those calculations, those will be reviewed by public works and engineering staff, and they'll have to meet, meet our requirements before they can begin any type of construction. And so, you know, that's, that's the process, and like I said, that all has to be submitted to us before the final plat can be considered by this body. And then, of course, once the final plat is considered, that's, that's before, they can't build any houses till the final plat's approved and, and recorded, so.
And we have to be convinced that this will not disperse any more property, I'm sorry, any more water than what's currently dispersed from this property?
Yeah, the existing topo, he's completely correct, existing topo, water, part of that section of this, does drain onto his property, I mean, it does, that's the topography of the area. So what they have to do to develop it is they have to, any increase from those roadways, from the rooftops, all that has to be detained on, on the site.
On their property.
On their property. And then.
So if this is approved, the preliminary plat, they still got to meet all those requirements?
Absolutely, sure.
Even though we're not seeing any kind of drainage pond or anything over here?
There's a detention pond kind of shown, it would be kind of at the extreme southeastern corner of Mr. Fisher's property, there's a detention pond shown, at Lot, next to Lot 858. There's another detention and area on the north side, because some of this property does flow, there's kind of, it was foot flow to the north, and so there's another detention on the north side, on, kind of near the Summer Ridge side of the property.
So you're saying 858, that open space is a?
That's a, there's, it's a detention and drainage easement, yes, yeah.
And where's the other one?
It's on, it's on the north side, kind of next to Lot 870.
Even though it just says detention drainage?
Yeah. There's a, they said with the existing topography, it kind of, part of it goes, north part of this property kind of goes more to the north. But then part of it does go, again, the existing topo is, it flows that way, there's no doubt.
My name is Aous Ahmed, I work with SEC at 815 Delta Tennessee Boulevard, we are the applicant. Anyway, I just wanted to address all the concerns about the drainage and address Mr. Fisher's concerns also, so really, we have two detention ponds on the subdivision, one of them on the north, on the north part, it's the drainage detention easement, really, this one receives almost half the subdivision, and this drainage, like the drainage patterns on the subdivision ain't changing from what is actually existing, so we're not going to send more runoff to any property other than the existing runoff that goes there. This is the city regulations and stormwater ordinance to meet the 25-year storm event, so really, looking at Mr. Fisher's property, it's, we're proposing a detention pond behind Lot 867. This detention pond will accommodate the increase in the runoff volume and will detain it before it releases it through the outlet box. And previous supposed calculations will be provided to the engineering department to be, ah, sorry, to be reviewed and approved. And actually, the construction plans has, had already been through that previously and it's been approved. I'm more than happy to sit with Mr. Fisher and explain all of that, and show him the construction plans, also I'm more than happy to provide the drainage calculations to him too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, one more time briefly.
You know, I think it's, I think it's good to say you're going to have a retention pond, but they got an emergency spillway that's pointed right inside of my house on the previous plat, and they've also got these drains that come out of these retention ponds that's going to flow out on my property, and that hasn't been addressed. To say that you've got a retention pond that's going to capture and store all this water in a kind of flooding we've been experiencing over the years, it's not a question, if this is going to flood on me, it's a question of when.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. And I think the bottom line here again is, staff's going to review this, and we cannot and we won't allow something that's going to disperse more water than what is currently done there, so these calculations will be reviewed by staff, and if they, they don't meet the requirement, it's not going to be approved, correct, Kevin?
Yeah, or they'll have to modify.
Yeah.
The plans or something, yeah.
Okay, all right. Any other questions or discussion from the commission? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comment.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second? A motion and a second to approve with staff comments, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved. Okay, we are now on to final plaques, beginning with Seven Oaks Business Park, Seven Oaks Boulevard, owner, developer, Seven Oaks Investments LLC.
Yeah, this is an HPR plat, this is for the latest building in the Seven Oaks Business Park, it's, it's about 7.86 acres, it is a C2 zone, this is primarily to dedicate all the various public utility easements that'll be on this property and create the HPR horizontal property regime for those units. We just had a couple of standard comments regarding the thoroughfare plan, adequate right-of-way is provided for Seven Oaks Boulevard, and any signs will require a separate permit, so with those comments, staff would recommend approval.
Do I have a motion?
There were no, there were no changes from?
From when the site plan came through, no.
About 10% maximum threshold for the accent materials, heard the designer review, and as proposed, the building does meet designer review manual. Standard comments, all to remain, we had a couple of staff comments. Comment one was a codes comment about the finished floor elevation, they have added that to the plans, but we will want that comment to remain. Comment two is about the drive aisles and the fire truck traversing throughout the site. We want to amend that comment, they have amended or adjusted the drive aisles to show 26-foot drive aisles, but we want the auto turn to be resubmitted and reviewed by the fire department to ensure the truck does not leave the pavement or the, front of the truck does not leave the pavement area or go over any of the curbing areas. So we'll just revise that comment, just to resubmit another auto turn to make sure the fire department is acceptable with what is submitted to them. Comment three, fire hydrant should be located on the fire line prior to the FDC. They have made a couple modifications to the plans, but this is another comment that we will leave up to the fire department to review, make sure it is acceptable per their specifications. There was a second, second sentence on that comment to, about the water main, they previously showed three taps coming off the main on the other side of Stonecrest, they only need one main coming off of that existing main, so they have done so, so the second part of that comment, of that comment can be removed. Comment four is regarding the fire line going to the building, they were showing a four-inch line, typically they are six inches or eight inches in size, they have addressed that comment, they're now showing a six-inch fire line going to the building. Comment five was a sewer clearance recorded over 75 feet, and they have done so, so we can remove that comment. And comment six is more so a informational con- And comment six is more so a informational comment regard, regarding the water pipe getting from the other side of Stonecrest to this property. They will be required to bore underneath Stonecrest as they will not be allowed to open cut Stonecrest Parkway. So that's more so informational comment. And with that, we can remove comments four and five completely. Comment two and three have been modified slightly, but will remain. And with that, staff would recommend approval.
Okay, questions for Mitch?
I just wanted to note that I'm going to recuse myself from discussion and voting on these, the next two, this one and the next one.
Okay. Thank you. So Mitch, on staff comment number two, talking about the drive aisle and which fire truck's being used. So just to clarify, what we're voting on is, although it doesn't necessarily say it, but what we're voting on is that this will have to be approved to go further.
Correct, yeah. Fire department will have another chance to review this and it will need to meet their requirements to be approved.
Okay.
Kevin, is staff okay with one entrance on that property? The property next door has two, actually, is reason I'm asking.
Yeah, it has two because it's, obviously they had two frontages. We, we liked it, the, where they proposed it, just because it's far enough south of the, one of the entrances to the hospital there. And so, you know, we, I think one entrance is, is fine. If there could have been something worked out with adjacent property owners for cross access, that'd have been perfect, maybe more ideal, I guess, but, you know, that's not an option, so we're okay with what they've done here.
Other questions? Do I have a motion? Move to approve with staff comments? Have a motion to approve with staff comments? Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we have one abstention. Okay. Our next item is Stonecrest Development, Stonecrest Parkway. Owner, developer, Robert Bouvis.
This is a site plan for three medical buildings and a hotel to be built on the property northeast of the intersection of Rock Springs Road and Stonecrest Parkway. Property is approximately five point five five acres in size. And the southern portion of the site is located within the five hundred year and the one hundred year floodplain as well. Most of the development in the floodplain is reserved for drainage and detention. The site would have points of access off of Rock Springs Road and Stonecrest Parkway with other access points at the adjoining gas station in that southeastern, or sorry, southwestern track and then the neighboring track over to the east. Vehicle use area for the site, two point six three acres, and that would require eleven thousand four hundred and sixty-four square feet of landscaping. Applicants proposing for eleven thousand five hundred and eighty square feet. Total parking required of one hundred and eleven spaces and they're showing for two hundred and ten. Handicap parking space requirement of seven, they're showing for eight. The landscape plan, we did receive a revised version of from the previous submitted since the packets went out. So this landscape plan does show a variety of trees and shrubs planted throughout the site. The shrubbery and trees are shown lining the perimeter of the property and throughout the landscape islands. Additional streetscape may be needed to be provided along, along Rock Springs Road. There's a hundred year floodplain that is part of Rock Springs Road. It's fronting Rock Springs Road or other. We don't know if the applicant intends on leaving that existing vegetation there, or if they do plan on leaving it as is, we're fine with that streetscape not existing in that portion of it because it's shown on other portions of the Rock Springs Road or frontage. If that vegetation is planned to be removed, we will want them to add some vegetation along Rock Springs Road to fill it in. Architectural elevations, Mitch, show all four buildings to utilize primary materials of brick and glass glazing with accent material block around the base of the buildings. No more than ten percent of the entire building may be finished with accent materials. We have received updated elevations on this since the packets went out as well. The medical buildings, one and two, which I believe are on the western side of that tract of land, show fourteen point two percent block. These elevations will need to meet designer view and revised. As currently, designer view requires a minimum of ten percent. So at fourteen percent, it does exceed the requirement for the accent materials, which is why we're asking for the revision to be made. Standard comment, one through five, all to remain. We have staff comments to go through. There have been several of these staff comments that have been addressed rather than going through each and one, each and every one of those. Staff comments four, six, eleven, fifteen, seventeen, nineteen, twenty-one, and twenty-six have all been addressed. However, with those comments that do remain, there have been several that have been out, not been addressed at this time to staff's satisfaction. There are a couple that are concerning regarding the fire department access and traverse throughout the site. That is one of our bigger concerns we have. And due to that, among other comments that do remain at this time, we don't feel comfortable recommending approval.
Okay. Questions for Mitch? Mitch, I guess, you know, you talked about as far, as far as fire department access and whatnot. I think when I initially looked at that and looked at, you know, some of the, you know, three story and two story buildings and trying to visualize how we could potentially get a truck around it, I'm, I'm not comfortable. The other thing that, the entry on the west side onto Stonecrest, we just talked about this on the prior one. Do we really have enough distance between there and, and then the access into, where is that access? Hospital, yes, I thought.
Yeah.
Is that sufficient or do we have concerns there that?
You know, we, we, we haven't looked at that specifically. I don't think, I didn't realize that it was to us, looking at this, the overlay on this, how close that is to that, that access point. You know, it is south, so you wouldn't have conflicting left turns, but it is still, if you had someone pulling left out of the hospital and turning right out of this site, there would be, might be a conflict there. So I mean, I think, I don't know what that distance is. That is, that is probably something we need to look at. I agree.
Okay. Well, I, I just hear enough here that staff's concerned and staff's not in a position to recommend approval.
That's correct.
So with that, commission, are there any other questions or staff or discussion that you want to have? If not, then I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to deny. Move to staff comments, especially related to the auto turn.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to decline. Any further discussion? All those in favor of denial of this site plan signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is declined.
And one abstention.
With one abstention. Thank you. Okay. We are now on to the May bond review report.
Yeah, we had several this month, so I'll go through, through these. First one is Legacy Lot One Twenty. This is one that has, it was a large one because primarily water and sewer. They have, could make quite a bit of progress there, not finished yet. But we are comfortable in recommending a reduction in that one to one hundred thousand and to extend it one year. Cantor Farm, section three, this is one that they have actually, they paved the roads last August. So we're comfortable there, recommend a reduction in that one to ten thousand and just extend that one six months as a maintenance bond, since we've already had the road space since last August, we're, we're okay with that, not doing a full year on the maintenance bond on that one. Woodpoint, section one and section two, they're both, I've covered them at the same time. They have not paved those streets yet. So we would recommend extension of both of those at the same amount. And so it, yeah, six months at the same amount on both of those. Burden Farm six, just speak to that developer. They are, they're not quite a hundred percent, they're about eighty-seven percent built. Talked to that developer. He, he says optimistically he might be finished by the end of this year, but spring of next year is more realistic on that one. I would recommend, again, same amount and extension of six months there. Stone Trace, this is the commercial development, corner of, of Rock, Old Nashville Highway and Sam Reilly Parkway. Yeah, this is a very large bond. It's large enough that it shows up as number signs. It didn't, it didn't, the column wasn't wide enough on that one, he printed it evidently. So I don't really exact, can't remember the exact amount. It's a large bond. However, they have gone quite a bit of work there, as you all, if you've been driven by there, you've seen it, the signals in, gene lane. There's some internal developments that are, or other developments that still did be finished, though. So we would recommend a reduction in that one to three hundred thousand and to extend it one year. Cedar Hills, section one, phase one and two, they're about, they got one lot left in that one. They did, did talk with them. They did say the contractor is mobilizing this week and they should be able to meet that May thirtieth deadline. So if they are, this is the end of the maintenance period. So if they get that done, we would be ready to release that. Otherwise, we would want to extend it until they, we say six months or, if they get done in three months or whatever, we would be fine releasing it then as well, because this is the end of the maintenance period on that one. Blakeney, section two, phase one, they are about a hundred percent built out. They did request an extension there. We have only had that one for one year. They did request an extension as the construction traffic would be utilizing that to access section two, phase two. So we are okay with an ex, a one year extension on that one, since we only had it a year. Woodmont six B, we are just extend that one one year, but that, we can't begin the maintenance period on that one. They have got everything done. Cedar Park, this is the commercial kind of subdivision along, kind of between Rock Springs Road and Cedar Grove. They've only built one of those commercial lots. We did have a site plan approved for a second one pretty recently. They did request an extension on this one. They, they don't have plans to finish the paving until they can get more of the lots built so that the road doesn't get damaged from the construction traffic. So they've asked for an extension there. I'm okay with that now. I think at some point they, we probably do need to think about getting that one paved because a commercial development, it could take a little while to build out and I don't want to leave the roads sitting in binder for forever. So, well, again, we do have one that's about to get construction on the second lot in there pretty soon, so. And Westover, phase one A, that's again, it's about ninety-seven percent built out. We are okay with the year extension there. We won't have that one for one year. And then Buckingham Place, section three, this is one that's, is a hundred percent built. Did not hear back from the developer on that one. It's the only developer I didn't hear back from. We did recommend a six month extension. They are, I, I would like to give them the summer to get that one finished out, so. And I think that's all I got for the bond report.
Okay. Questions for Kevin on the bond report? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the bond report.
Have a motion to approve the May bond report? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the bond report. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. Staff comments?
I don't have anything else.
Okay. Anything from the commission? Stand adjourned. Thank you.